A little financial reward, I mean, I don't know.
You know, as we've talked over the years, we did, I feel we're getting all closer and closer because our needs are becoming more and more and all of us are spending a little more time each year. I don't know, that's a really tough one because when do you make that switch to an individual or not? Eric's happy doing what he's doing, I'm happy, everybody's here happy, great. I don't think we need to discuss, and I know those discussions come up and that makes you, or probably makes you feel like, okay, do they want me or not? But I think the council absolutely does. I don't think some of those discussions or comments that are made are well thought out.
None of those chairmen would be eligible for the benefits package because they're on the menu. So, I don't, you guys probably do it. I think the town can afford the $3,000, $600.
I brought it up.
But maybe people that aren't here might be more interested. Joe Blow down on Mill Road said, "Gosh, I can make 50 bucks for helping out the town." I mean, I don't know.
I'm sure someone would think, or some people would think that for that extra.
Because we'd sure like more people to participate.
We love.
I'd rather have more people participate than complaining.
Yep.
No complaining if you don't come.
You know, a hundred ain't better than two.
If you started with 500 bucks, you'll have a lot of people.
Yeah, that would start, then that would start changing.
So we've talked about two.
50 or 100 bucks even, I think we're still damn near volunteers. But Eric is, I just know what he's supposed to do.
27,300.
And it's like we've got to report to pay, to really pay what it's actually worth, but at least giving up what you've been, let's leave him at 20, $600 a job.
Well, that's nothing. Once we fill this job, somebody's gonna have to pay.
Oh, yeah.
They'll never get somebody as cheap as I am.
Exactly, I said that like four times tonight. I just.
I agree.
We've got to keep getting that up because the day's gonna come.
And there's long shot problems, I mean, it just never, you know, or, you know, issues, things that are coming.
We're gonna have so many zoning violations, we're gonna have more.
How much money does Eric save us in attorney fees with what he goes into these meetings and everything else? It's by far probably much more, much more than what he's making. And it just, I think it'd behoove us to, if we didn't have him, doing what he's doing.
I can't take credit for that tonight. Ryan set up the meeting, that is why.
Take all the credit you want.
So we have, we've talked about Eric's, we've talked about planning members, we have some figures there. Is there anybody else that the town employs that we would need to look at or want to look at?
Again, the 2% thing, why aren't, why aren't we?
Getting a cost of living?
Yeah, why aren't we? I know it's small, but it's something. You've been here this long, 2%, we are adding to it, we appreciate. We cannot run this town without the people we have.
And what about you, Chip? I mean, you got a raise last year, but, I mean, how are you?
I'm fine, that was a raise, I'm perfectly fine with mine hours, I give my time.
Okay.
Well, I'm just thinking right across the board, 2%.
Well, as far as the 2%, that would go to everybody, the whole town.
That's what I'm talking about. For longevity, it's not much, but it's something that says, we appreciate you. We signed on in 2006, and we sat there until now.
We're long since.
For all the people that don't know that, you're right.
Some of us signed on before then. And there's been nothing, and so here we are, down the road, docking.
So we got, so on my list there before, we've got a 2%, as far as discussing 2%, so we're gonna wanna find that in and either add that to a vote or not, so I'm gonna call for that. We have planning commission, I've got written down at $50 each. I've got written down here Eric, and bumping that up to a $30,000 salary.
I think you're right, get Eric's up to 30,000, and then much as 2%.
Okay, so we got 2%, anybody else feel?
Mary, how are you feeling?
I'm just here.
I know, how many hours are you putting in?
And it looks really nice, too, what you're doing.
I know.
I'm just here.
I'll make a comment.
I think we definitely need to look at putting her onto the retirement thing, she's vested in there as a tier one employee.
And I actually expected that, just to go.
Yeah, I actually disagree with what the state law is telling us. I think that we have the option of not adding that as a benefit, but I think in this situation that we should add it.
I agree.
And so, I'm not familiar with Title 40 million, I don't have that from you, but I actually think there's an option, I think that gentleman may have been misleading you.
I think he gave you 90% of the truth.
Yeah, and so.
He didn't lie, I think he just, he didn't give you the last 10% of the truth.
Right, and so it's just, it's the same thing, we got the nice little misleading, you know, the little, but I'm not, but I, regardless, I think that that should be included.
I agree.
It's that little bit extra that down the road helps. It's only 2% per year, that's what she's making on her retirement, 2% per year, it's like.
Well, and I just can't help but think that the folks that spend the most time doing this, that, you know, that have been in that program, that meet the criteria to be in that program, why wouldn't they be in the program?
Yeah, well, and this too, she has to work with me, so you better take that into consideration.
You're my back. I can't tell you how much I appreciate if I pick up the phone and ask for help.
Shelby will not back you up there. Like Martin Mark with, ask Ryan.
I'll have your back here, because I know, I can pick up the phone anytime I have a question about something, and you're always gonna help.
All of us from 2000.
So, so in this we would add, or you are asked, I mean, Mary being going into that in this discussion, I think that some of the council feels comfortable about that, we don't need any exception for that?
Yeah, I think we should include that as a benefit, and I think our motion needs to state that. As a benefit in that position. Because like I do say, I don't think that that is necessarily true, that if it's not offered, you don't have to offer.
And I believe he did not mention that part of it.
Yeah, well, his job is to sell it, so.
Yes. It was interesting, though, how he just showed up and then, so, and got those phone calls and, and, yeah, I mean, his job is, you know, he wants to do that, so I think he forgot that other little.
Yeah, I would have probably loved to have been in that meeting.
So, you know, we have these figures as far as Mary moving into the benefits package, the 2% increase, planning, council, $50 a member per meeting, Eric going to 30,000 as a salary, and then each year looking at where we may stand, but I take it that we're gonna put the 2% in the motion to look at that increase each year?
Yeah, I think as long as the economy's good and we're in, I mean, when the stalemates, the other municipalities stalemate on that 2%.
I was just gonna say, I know that sometimes they just, you got two or three years, you don't get it, and then you got.
Yeah, and sometimes they'll give you 3%, once the economy picks back up, but I just think if you just locked in, it's just, here I am with Daniel another year, $20 an hour, getting mud up to my neck, ain't this fun?
Well, not just you, I don't want, you know.
Well, I'm talking about him.
It was all the wasting.
Till you got in.
What we don't want is to have people think that, yeah, I don't want to help Daniel, I don't pay you, I'm gonna, you know, and have that direction. Because we, I mean, I think that everyone's been generous with their time for a long time, and I think we can tighten that generosity up just because we have got years in the room.
Yeah, I can't say enough how much we need these people.
So the chair would entertain a motion with those things, or anything else they wanna add or not add or discuss?
Do we turn on a public hearing first?
Oh, we should?
Yeah.
Thank you, Kim. Of course, every single time in a public hearing, we're gonna have multiples, so is there any more discussion before we leave?
Do you think we should take that with planning commission before this is voted on? You're okay?
Yeah.
I make the motion to leave the public hearing. Go back into the.
Regular session?
Regular session.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second?
Seconded.
We have a motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
We are now back in regular session.
Okay, so, I'd like to make a motion to raise Eric's salary to 30,000 a year, and to move Mary into the retirement program that was offered by the state, and to increase, 2% increase a year on all other employees, council members, and the planning commission. For all the planning commissions, move them to $50 per meeting. And then on the 2% increase.
Okay. Can we get that motion, Mary?
Okay.
We have a first, do we have a second?
I seconded.
Any discussion?
I think the 2% should not be included in the motion. It's okay for this year, but I think we have to look at that every year.
Okay, and I agree. Make a separate motion for that?
Well, no, it's okay in this motion, but I think it needs to be clarified for this year.
Okay.
Because in the future, yeah, just.
Just want to add, add the motion that the 2% should be applied the following, following year and addressed each year.
Addressed each year.
Okay, we have a first, and we have a motion that, we have a second on that motion? Okay, we have a first and a second on that motion, any last discussions? Not, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
I abstain.
Okay, so we had three people, the motion passes. Okay, possible approval signing of the following resolutions and ordinances. You guys gotta get bored, I'll start reading. All right. So the first resolution, I believe, resolution granting municipal acceptance for future consideration of the annexation of the North properties into the town of Daniel. This resolution is the first step in this process of, I'm correcting if I'm wrong, Eric, because it has to be done before the beginning of the process to start looking at the property coming into town.
Yeah, that's just the first step.
Okay, I'm gonna read the resolution and, oh, oh. Resolution number would be the DR 2, 2018-06-04A. Approval date 2018-06-04, effective date 2018-06-04. Short title, resolution granting municipal acceptance for future consideration of the annexation of the North properties into the town of Daniel. The purpose of this resolution is to primarily accept the annexation of the North properties, which was requested, requested by the town council in the recorder's office on June 4th, 2018, at 6:00 PM, and to authorize the certification and annexation review process by municipal officers. Resolution be it resolved, accepted, approved, and/or ratified by the governing legislative body of the town of Daniel, that the town of Daniel, a political subdivision of the state of Utah, desires to accept the above referenced annexation of the North properties for the future consideration and provided in the Utah code, anointed section 10-2-418, subcategory 5. A copy of the map is attached as attached hereto, and that any and all officers of the town are authorized and prior action of whom are hereby ratified to fulfill their acts, duties, and obligations as set forth in the Utah code, anointed section 10-2-418, subsection 5, with regards to their processing the annexation. Any discussion?
Good job, Mary.
Make the motion to approve.
Chair will entertain that motion, we have a first, we have a second?
Second.
First and a second, any last discussion? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes?
We need to set a public hearing 30 days after this is the next step. So if you wanna do that tonight, set the public hearing on this resolution tonight?
Okay. Okay, they'll see that right now, then as a council, we're still, we're back in regular session, so, when will that be, where's next meeting? Not the planning, not the dual, but the next.
July 2nd is the next meeting.
And I know that's on our date, that date that we're gonna meet, we've always kinda had that on the 4th, being that weekend, we've kinda.
Yeah, that's a terrible.
The 4th on Wednesday this year, so.
That's a terrible. Yeah, exactly. So what happened in the last few years?
It's great, it's a big problem we have.
Come up for that, make a motion.
Most are gonna be around that 4th weekend, and this happens fairly often on the 4th, depending on when it is.
Maybe it's a best.
Is that something that we'd like to do for the next week?
I think so, if we can, I think that's a good idea.
Okay, so, council side, do we need a motion to make that, 'cause I know we had an order to make the dates?
Motion to move the meeting, yes.
Make a motion to move our next regular meeting that was scheduled on July 2nd to move it to July 9th for the public hearing for resolution DR 2018-06-04A.
Okay, we have a first, we have a second, we have a second. Any last discussion?
Okay, so that's two items in that motion, we're moving the meeting, and we're setting the public hearing, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, what are we gonna do if the room's not available?
Then.
Cover it up, sorry.
Change that motion to just add available.
If available?
Yep, just the date available, and if not, we'll have to make the next, available date maybe the next week possibly.
Okay, so, given that today's the 4th, does everybody realize that we have to do it within 30 days?
No, not before 30 days.
Not before, okay, so we're good. Because the 4th, I mean, if we had to do it on the 2nd, then within that 30, we could do it then anyway.
So the law states after, so before 30 days.
I just wanted to confirm that.
All right, so you'll need to notice, as you write in your notes, you'll need to notice changing the meeting, raising the meeting, and setting the public hearing.
Yep.
Okay, just clarification.
Thank you for going there. So we got to, discussion? Where did we get to on this, on this resolution?
We have a motion.
Accepted, we pass it, we're on the next thing.
We have a question.
We did, then we went back.
We were just clarifying it from Mary, I think.
We did.
Yeah, property annexation, item number B under six, so item B would be a resolution for PTIF signatures requirement. So we would have been asked, I think the state had sent a letter to us, that we have to have a resolution passed by council for anyone being with signature for the bank with regards to the PTIF signatures. So, we have, I'm gonna be reading this resolution, but the tax sheets I think Mary has, so. I'll start off, resolution DR 2018-06-04B, approval date 2018-06-04, effective date 2018-06-04. Short title, resolution for PTIS signature requirement. Purpose, the purpose of this resolution is to certify that the following are authorized, to add or delete users to access and/or transact with PTIF accounts, to add, delete, or make changes to bank accounts tied to PTIF accounts, to open or close PTIF accounts, and to exclude any necessary forms in connection with such changes on behalf of the town of Daniel. Resolution be it resolved, accepted, approved, and/or ratified by the governing legislative body of the town of Daniel, that the town of Daniel, a political subdivision of the state of Utah, desires to accept the above referenced PTIF authorization requirement. Copy of the PTIF public entity resolution attachment hereto, and that designated officers of the town are authorized and prior actions of whom are hereby ratified to fulfill their acts, duties, and obligations as set forth in Utah, in Utah with regards to their processing. So, the state has asked us to have this resolution passed, we need to put the names of the, who are gonna be signatures. I assume it'd be the same signatures that we currently have, but we discussed that and make that, and that's what will be attached to this new resolution, with the names. So, I don't know if we want to or not change, but I know that we're gonna, we need to attach those names to this.
And you can count on the reason that somebody's changed the names on one.
Yep.
Now there'll be a resolution, so they have some backing.
Well, plus they're changing their platform, their role, and having a new platform as to how we even look up any of our statements or anything. And so, that's part of implementing this change.
So how many signatures are we looking for in this?
Requires two to three.
We have three.
You mean Cherry, correct?
So, are you gonna be a signature?
That's, to whatever, whatever council decides is what we have to say back to the state saying who our signers are.
Oh, that can make changes to, okay, I understand.
So we had Cherry just being in her position, and you and I, so we had always two signatures needed, but a third person in case we couldn't get all the second person.
Right.
Hey, no, I mean, does anyone have an opinion on who, what, or not want to sign?
I don't want to sign.
Oh, well.
I give a crazy ass shirt. I'm sure there's some liability with that sign.
I know, I don't, this goes back a year, but as far as I remember, clerks, I don't know if they sign.
That, well, and that was the thing, I didn't know if the financial clerk doesn't usually intervene.
We then went through that in the beginning, so did I, and that was kinda discouraged to have a clerk sign versus, you know.
Yeah, and clearly in our audit, that's a, so, yeah, I think you're fine, continue.
Okay.
So, same three, you? Okay, so it has to be notarized, so you guys can actually just come and sign it?
Shouldn't already?
Run home.
About that.
With those names included, that would take care of that resolution, the chair will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion, we'll accept the municipal resolution, DR-2018-06-04B.
And the names? The names, the signature names?
Okay, what the signature names?
Of, the three people that are very sorry.
Of the three people that are signing, signatures are.
Cherry, Chip, and her.
Cherry, Chip, and Eric.
There you go.
We have a. I was gonna say we have a first and a second. We have a first and a second, any other discussion on it? If none, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Resolution passed, thank you, Tom.
Awesome.
Now we're gonna get to resolution, resolution approving amendments to the Daniel Town general operation budget. So this resolution is for our general operating budget.
Thirty for those.
Yeah, those two are done. We didn't see in the.
We got it, we did it right now?
Oh, Lord.
So we're done, thank you. Yes?
And we get the, the conversations are done.
Done with that, that resolution as well? So you have the signature pages on that? That takes care of all the ordinances of the resolution. We're down to item number seven then, planning department report violations and enforcement.
Oh, boy. I just barely got back, winded from the first court.
Yeah, got up there anyway.
I'm not legal opinion, by the way. You can't have that one, that's my note. That's important. Oh, no.
That's okay.
Me too.
So here's a planning report for.
There you go.
Okay, so you can see what's going on, we haven't slowed down too much, we still got, things are cranking.
So the Reed law split it out new, or did they hold it still on there?
The Ritchie?
The, the Reader?
Well, yeah, what we have is daughter-in-law that's been calling about splitting the Reader property, and putting two homes on that 10 acres. So Carolyn's called.
Inquiring?
Yeah, it hasn't gone beyond inquiry yet, but.
So it's coming.
Maybe, I don't know.
What about the Binion law?
The Binion lots fit inquiry, that's a good one to bring up.
Where is it, just real quick?
The Binion property is, is the one that's for sale right next to Gary Walton, that runs up.
Oh, okay, that outer house, the field, it, okay, yeah.
So, I met with Heber City, Tony Kohler, I don't remember the day, it's not important, but, they showed up, a developer showed up, and had the whole thing filled with houses, subdivided with a road going around it, 6,000 acre lots. Was quite surprised that he'd spent all that money in engineering, to find out it wasn't in Heber City.
Oh, man.
Wow. So, that kinda died right there. He asked about getting out of the city, to which Tony Kohler referred him to Mayor Turner's prior statements made in some meeting I wasn't aware of, but apparently the mayor told him over his dead body. So that was, that was revisited to that.
I don't think I've ever used that term. That could have been said by somebody else, but I don't think.
That was, that was sent on to the developer at that point, so we haven't seen an application. I guess that's a pretty clear message.
If it was said. I think that's the story, when you tell 10 people at the end, you hear a different thing than the start.
Yeah, yeah, it was, it's quite.
Wow.
How okay did they think that?
Yeah, yeah, I did refute it, I wasn't there, I don't know, but.
They literally had it.
Yeah, it was all subdivided, yeah, it's 6,000 square foot lots, so that was well down the road.
Oh, man. Six, eight, six of an acre lots, is that what it was?
Kinda like what they're trying to do over there.
Yeah, or that there at the same time, yeah.
Okay, anything else on there, jump out at me?
The sex, the class of section major.
Your eyes are right there.
So, so sometimes, council, I need your help. So let me read this to you, and I deleted the name of the residence. Every season phone call in reference to a business located on Big Hollow Road. Apparently, there's some kind of sexual retreat with workshops. The name of the business is Shades of Intimacy, they have a Facebook page as well as a website. They retreat about once a month, producing a lot of traffic on a small road, cars stay pretty much all weekend. I was told the business name is registered in Heber at the old engineering office next to Chip's. There weren't sure, they weren't sure they wanted to do a formal complaint with the past this information along. According to Facebook, the next retreat is June 22nd. How would the council like me to investigate this? I'm looking for a little direction here, get us both to help me out.
I'll fill you in.
We have a volunteer that would be doing an official capacity review.
Well, they're only gonna give you an address once you submit something, so.
What do you mean submit?
It's an undisclosed location.
I mean, I'll tell you what I would love, and I think you have the personality to do it. If those cards are there, go knock on the door.
What do you mean I have the personality to do it?
You can sit there and tell them straight face, and they can do, or.
So, it depends on our programming lessons.
I actually looked this, this thing up online, and it's, there's no exchange of bodily fluids.
It says that.
It does say that on the website. The business is licensed in Heber City, but they go to remote sites to do this, there's no, you do alternate, if you go as a couple, you will be paired with somebody else as they work on communication skills, back and forth, but it's more of a therapy than a, than a first alluded to problem.
And, and so, what therapist, or what legality a therapist, because I don't get into sexually oriented business.
Yeah, and I don't know their credentials, they're not listed on, on the website, but it's clearly therapeutic, as communication, as spiritual, deeper in nature, spiritual. So, I was just looking for some clarification.
Get straight face for that for a while.
Investigate Salt Lake City's, I think they probably got some things down there, but.
So if you live in Daniel, you can have a Heber City business license?
Well, if, if they're, if they're licensed in a city and they're doing remote retreats.
Oh, so this might be, the Daniel location might be the remote.
The remote retreat.
The remote retreat, yeah.
But don't they have to have a, when they have to have a business license?
Well, not necessarily, not necessarily, they're.
Health codes, people staying there, I mean, it's.
Well, it's the one they think, so. Well, it's, it's a one-day thing, so.
All day thing, ten of one, ten of nine.
Yeah, but it's a one-day thing, and, so there's a couple of red flags that immediately comes up as me, because one spirituality, we're gonna be going on religious freedom. Wanna tread really careful on religious freedom, second one is therapeutic, so they're calling it therapeutic, so we know therapeutic is protected by law, by federal law.
Well, well, they're calling.
So, those, those two items are immediate, are immediate concerns, disease comes up, there's a few more, but. Those two things that get the town in trouble, so, just.
Monitor's change.
If, if there's, if there's a problem with traffic, if they're causing, if they're causing disturbance, if there, then there are steps we can take. But to just go after, per se, this and what is designed, you'll be treading on thin ground.
And how would we find out the actual truth?
Exactly.
Hey, can't volunteer to don't.
I know we've got a couple of volunteers here.
Who's bar training bar?
Barbara, date night?
I'll take, I'll take Alita, let's call Barbara for you.
Yeah, good, 'cause he doesn't know how to break it to her.
I'll say, we all voted you in, so you can't, you can, you can deny it till you die.
What about, uh, Stephanie with the security?
Sometimes my job is fun.
I'm gonna go on record that I refuse.
Sometimes my job is fun.
Eric, let me ask you about that through this panel, though, right now, that's just not a, a, a red flag to, to deal with unless it plays out kind of thing?
Unless it plays out and the traffic's a concern, uh, maybe fire, fire may be a concern if the fire trucks can't get down and turn around. Uh, I, I assuming that they have inside restroom, if you had a reunion at your house, we wouldn't come over and tell you you couldn't do that. And so that's how I look at that, is okay, so all your friends get together and yeah, do whatever your friends do, you know, we're not in the middle of that. If you're affecting your neighbors, then that's a problem, and Eric will have to go over there and try and be straight-faced.
So they're kind of, we're kind of convinced that it's not a sexual-oriented business?
Absolutely, absolutely, everything on their website denounces all of that illicit behavior, so.
We're just taking out the impressions on somebody else's.
So, apparently they do this all over, and.
Oh, yeah, they do.
So, I don't know, you just saw one on the news, right, the one down in.
The Gau?
Down in Salt Lake there that was having the parties and neighbors could look in the windows and there was nothing they could shut them down for. It was their right to do that in their house, and, I mean, there, and it was not this, it was.
Like parties?
Yeah, yeah, it was, and, and of course, the city went out and tried to side them, they're in court, but they already lost, so.
All right.
That was a big deal, that one made the news, so.
Just do it, why?
Well, it's just, you know, that's why I say you just gotta be careful when you go in there in official capacity and, you know, if you just wanna send a bunch of guys over there to raise hell, then there's, that's a different story, but. In official capacity, the town would have to be treading very, because of those items that I mentioned.
A lot of cars or what, on that roads where it's, like you say, where it starts, uh, being so much that it constricts what can go down that road or where, you know, you can't even park in front of your house, or.
Yeah, and those are the issues that we would deal with, if it's, if it's causing a problem in the neighborhood, that's what we would be there.
And if they started doing this remotely, in Daniel, like, um, once a week, would that be, that'd still be okay, just?
It might be up to county law.
I, I guess you have that.
Do you get run?
We're lucky here, I don't know how big these classes are, because if there's so many, then they'd need a mass gathering permit, county one.
And what's the count?
I, I believe that county is fifty, I think it's fifty, I'm unsure of that, but I think it's fifty, and then they have to actually go into the health department here and pull the permit, and they require them to have the bathrooms and all, everything that's, that they're gonna be doing, that's, we still fall under that with the health department as our, as our health people, so. They would have to fall under that, and then like I say, fire safety, any traffic safety issue would be, would be a big deal. But I don't know that, if the class is less than fifty, I don't know, we'd have a really tough time based on how many people go to the gun club.
Every week.
On that same road, so.
Right.
You're kind of, you know.
Maybe they'll take pictures on the hour, all the park guards never left.
Yeah, now after parking on the road, that's a different story, so, absolutely.
Wow.
Oh, by the way, planners aren't necessarily ordinance enforcers.
That's more money, right?
The fun part of the job.
Yeah, there's apparently. Okay, so do you have any other questions on that list? Um, I will make you aware on, uh, on the other complaint was weeds, we had, uh, the same person that had the complaint for the Amix has called the county about weeds in the, in the neighbor's yard. And so the county went out, uh, they, he found the county unresponsive, which he told him Daniel is unresponsive also, I guess, because of our lack of regulating handings. But, anyway, the county called me, said he's, he's, he's talking to the county manager, so you may hear this back through the channels, 'cause he was that mad that he was calling the county manager. But, the bottom line is, we don't regulate tumbleweeds, there's no noxious weeds in that, in that place, so, we don't, that's not what we do. So, again, we're unresponsive, beware. And then I did get a notice, uh, from Pam, and Pam, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
I mean, I, you got me out there first thing this morning, you said Dyer's Woad, Eric.
Isn't that what it was?
No. But I would rather you call and get me out there and make sure, because that's.
That's nasty stuff, that's what I'm.
It is, yeah, it's not Dyer's Woad, but if you, yeah, that's, that's a Class A, that's a Class A weed, and it's immediate response.
But what it looks like, Eric?
So if you go to Logan or Cash County, the whole hillside is yellow.
In Park City, it was really bad.
In Park City, right in the cut.
Coming into our, on the right-hand side, I think, coming into that.
Going out that cut, there were some over there, we spent three years in a row hand pulling them, bagging them, pulling them out of there.
Wow.
It's a nasty plant.
And they're still, in that cutaway, there's still a lot there coming, at least dornell-wise.
Yes, on the other side, especially when you cross into the Summit County side.
Okay.
Wasatch County's been very proactive, and like I said, I've been up there a few times pulling a bag, but, thank you, I would rather you call me, I go out and find out it's sweet clover, then, then go and find Dyer's Woad.
I'll just have not up on my weeds.
It's okay, that's why, that's why I say that, thank you for calling.
The thistles, though.
The thistles are sprayed, they were done this morning, while I was there, um, so thank you so much, I, I appreciate that call, you don't, really.
Why do you know who is kind of responsible, since the school's there, we get the fans.
It's not them.
They weren't doing anything, so, and we were happy to spray it, but I thought, oh, ask.
Well, you know, that's, the, the, the trees are right there, the grass is right there, you have to be very careful, I use glyphosate with just surfactant, so it's, it's a light spray. You won't see anything happen there for probably four days, and then you'll see the heads tip, it'll, it's a slow kill, but because of what's right on the other side of that fence, it's just, so I just.
Better to be official.
Yes, yes, so.
'Cause we could have taken our ATV down.
Right, yeah, I got some stuff that we could, twenty feet out there in the lawn, it'd be brown.
Be dead. Okay, cool, thank you.
So, but thank you so much for calling, I appreciate that, because, and we don't have Dyer's Woad in the town.
Yeah.
That's a good report, so.
That was the first I'd seen, and I thought, oh my God, Dyer's Woad.
Yes, yeah, scared me, I was like, oh my gosh, here we go, okay, all that construction to go, you just don't know, is it bringing in, and it's a good thing to be aware of, of.
What, you know, if there was a weed, what's the worst weed that we would have of get, or that we, is there, I mean.
There's so many.
It's not the one that's just produced.
Well, there's some that just take over, like the Dyer's Woad, but then you got the leafy spurs, that if you pick it, and, and it gets on you, it leaves a blister, if you rub your eye, you're blind, that's it. That's a nasty weed, we have that, that's the one we have in Big Hall Road, so, we actually issued a stop work order on, on the Bennet house, because nothing was happening with that.
Which, what is that one called?
It's called leafy spurge, and that's a nasty plant, it looks just like milkweed when you pick it, it's a little white, but if it gets on your skin, it'll blister you, if you wipe your eye. And it, and, I don't know how this works, but sheep eat it up.
Go.
They eat, oh yeah, and the sheep will just, so when this stuff gets up and flowers, the seed comes in a little pod and it's under pressure, and it will throw a seed fifteen feet, any direction, when it, when the seed pot goes. That's why it's so nasty, 'cause you can't keep up with.
Sounds like stuff out of Star Trek.
Yeah, it's just an ugly weed, and so, when the Bennets did that, I sent, we sent them an email and nothing happened, so we actually issued a stop work order, and then they come around and look at it.
And it's been, that's right.
Yeah, so we issued a stop work order on that, 'cause it was just, I thought it came on the property with their fill, they had built up the, the road, yeah. But it, it's on the property in other spots, so it's there, but he was happy that I told him, hey, Google this weed, Google, and it's like, you go, whoa, wait a minute, I can't have that. But we do have that, there's some sulfur secofoil, there's some other ones that we have in the town, but no Dyer's Woad, thank you. I'd rather somebody called and, and, you know, if we have something like that, we just gotta be on top of that, with whatever it takes.
And, and as far as residents, I mean, they can call you and come in and do their personal property, or more just town property, or you?
I'm only, the only thing I've been doing is town property, I think that if we go to do personal property, I think the town will have to check with the liability insurance.
And certification of certain area.
Right, and so I think there's some issues there on private property, on public property, I'm happy to tell whoever that I'm spraying when they don't want me out there, if you do this, I won't come. So it's simple as that, if you wanna take care of the weeds, I won't come spraying your front yard.
And one more about a, a water tank for Daniel that's a full spray of theirs.
I have not, I have not received.
I didn't get up there and look at it.
I have, still have no keys to get through the gate, so Gary Walton's still working on that, um.
I should bring it.
Then, and that's what's happened in the past, you've been spraying up there, but I have not had to.
I've got.
Yeah, I can't, I just thought, I thought he'd just run off the coffee and bring over everything to me so I could, and I haven't been able to, I was actually in there, not last, yeah, it was last year, I went in and did the roads. I went in and did the, up the roads, 'cause I got a boom sprayer on the back, and so I just did the roads going up the road.
And then perhaps thistling on, on those roads in there, yeah.
Well, and, and that's the same thing we get it right now, even up on, on your road that I just sprayed, I'm down by the school spray and they sizzle out, and if you look fifteen feet, I mean, it's just, it's, but. Yeah, so, and, unfortunately, I do that at my other job, too, I do canal easements, and you can just see, just off the easement, there's, it's like, wow, that's pretty amazing.
It's a forest.
But, anyway, that's, thank you again. Okay, the other thing that I, I had to bring up was our fire, our fire thing, it's not on your report, that should be due next month, is that in our budget? Did we, the wildland fire, last year it was.
I've already, I've already signed the new one, we've got the four thousand hours carried forward till next, so this new budget year and everything.
Okay, so did our, did our price stay the same, twenty-one, twenty-two?
Same.
Okay, I, and.
And then, and they, and there is new docs, I mean, they're tweaking it each year a little bit because of all the openness that everyone complained about in the beginning.
Well, in all the questions I had to start with, this report that they want the town to generate, who's generating this report that we send in? And, I mean, there, that was, of course, we didn't like it, but it was signed, they're, they're in trouble, so.
And so when I talked to Tori just this last week, the day of, or the day before the big whole fire, um, is when we kind of went over this and got it, and then I just got the email, or maybe forwarded, or maybe I didn't, that, uh, the hours that we submitted last year, we had four thousand, and we only, so we had, we're like two hundred bucks to make up for that eighteen, nineteen year. So, all that work that was done in the riverbed before the big flood that has been, um, we got a full year's worth plus like ninety percent of this particular year's worth of time going against that.
Okay, super, and did we ever get to qualifying, what would qualify, what would, is it still a committee?
They, they just took, you know, we gave them the na, the names and the hours, and then I just got the thing back that is four thousand, we were twenty-one hundred, and we had four thousand dollars to work on.
Fine, I, the reason I say that is because we do have a cleanup crew going on over on the river bottom right now.
We need to know every name and every hour when they showed up, and if one person works one hour, they are not gonna add that is John Johnson, two hours, at the, whatever, and that's all they want, and that's, as much as we have given them last year, and they didn't ask for any more when he came in this year.
Okay, 'cause, yeah, we have that, that project going on right now, um, prior to fire season, they're trying to get that, all that stuff that came down during the flood out of that river.
And that, just individuals as a group?
It's, yeah, it's every minute, that whole group, so, yeah, there's fifteen, twenty guys working on that.
Do the, uh, the lister?
We definitely want to count their hours, 'cause that'll take care of this year and next year now, then.
I mean, count my hours, just on my section, I've probably got thirty or forty, you can't tell, but.
No, we, and we need that, and, and whether, you know, we don't wanna be over, under, but we wanna get the accurate.
And that's the same thing with the weed spray, if you're spraying, get your hours to the county, that's how we get the ISM grants, that's how we get the money to get this, so, so turn your hours, and don't forget to turn your hours.
Even around your yard?
Even your yard, absolutely, that's, that's what gets that pesticide available for you to pick up, that is that grant, and what they do is they take the hours, they can say, we got this much chemical, we got this many hours, these guys are in the program, give them more, and that's how that program works. If nobody reports, we'll lose that, so, that, that definitely understrengthened.
Well, they give you a piece of paper, so if you fill out the piece of paper and give it back to them, you're covered.
Yeah, yep, and you fax in your hours, yeah. Um, are you gonna report on our meetings, Ryan?
I can, or you're up there?
I don't, either way, so, uh, do you want me to just keep going?
Sure, I'm good with that.
Ryan will fill you in on a lot of this.
That sounds like a plan.
Okay, so we met with Twin Creeks, where they interconnect on the water, you guys remember we talked about hooking into Billy Beathers system?
Say it again.
Uh, we met with Twin Creeks, uh, we remember we talked about hooking into Billy Beathers system and, and feeding that back up as they were out of capacity. Um, they're too far down the road with their studies and grants, but they'll be running a twelve-inch water line up Highway forty on the other side, all the way up to Billy Beathers, so all the way to, to Little Sweden.
You say other side, you're talking about east side or, or?
East side is Highway forty, so they'll come down the road, they'll turn and go all the way up, and that, so they'll be feeding that, so they're not interested in the town being a part of that at this point. And the other one, we talked about, when, when we was in that meeting with Ron and Steve Farrell, we talked about doing the, uh, sewer system and hooking into that, and he, he just told us just what I told you to the attorney, they make an application to the town, you guys come submit it to us, we're in their system, that green line clearly is on the map. That whole triangle is serviced by Twin Creeks.
It's application-driven, is it?
Application-driven, and all the municipalities are doing exactly that, so they, the fee, I mean, I don't know what it is, I don't, what the fee is, or what, I mean, that can't be too cheap crossing the, the highway, but. Again, do you provide the service? Yeah, we don't know how much it costs, 'cause we haven't done, but.
And there's lots of people who have already gone to the road that, you know, outside of this, it's our only issue, there are people doing it all the time.
Yeah, so anyway, that was an option, and, and they're, they definitely say that we're in that area, in that triangle, so future zoning up along there, all the way up that road will be in, in that district, all the way to Little Sweden and then out, because they supply the water on Little Sweden, so that's, that's why we're included in that.
Very helpful.
And then, of course, Steve Farrell, when we met with the funding regarding Storm Haven, I can summarize that into these words, there's not a lot we can do for the town of Daniel.
Try to add a little bit to that, in a meeting, those words were quite said that way, is after the meeting that he got those words.
Yeah, okay, that's enough for me, huh?
Excellent, Eric, thank you, that was a lot. Mr. Kim, Daniel Municipal Water Issues is necessary, so we'll start with Daniel's first before Storm Haven, if, if there's anything to get or take back.
So Pam, we got that meeting on twentieth, right?
I'm pretty late, I'm young.
Okay, all right.
It's a public, and a.
Yeah, it'll be joint.
Seven?
Yeah, seven o'clock. Thank you.
Ryan just passed me this Southfield, uh, bits that come in from two companies on twelve hundred West, is that what they ask?
Yeah, South Gilbert.
What's the next item on the game, right, we're there?
We are, uh.
Is it, do we want to go to the next one, or is that?
Well, they're all, they're all, they're all involved, so it doesn't, yeah.
So I saw that as part of Daniel Municipal.
Yep.
Sorry.
Perfect, let's go.
I'm gonna get out of this.
I'm gonna.
I hope we have to do this, and I'm wondering why.
He gave it back.
Yeah, I did.
Why'd you give her back?
So, we got everything bid out after a slightly longer process and then, but, we got it, we got two bids, which is hard, because frankly, nobody, nobody wants to bid right now, they've got more work than they know what to do it. And the. And the price reflects that. So we got two bids, after a long story, uh, one at a hundred and seven and one at ninety-one. The engineer's estimate, I believe I told everybody ninety-seven thousand last time I was here, uh, my engineer's estimate bumped a little bit because I added the fire hydrant and changed a couple fittings. Uh, so you can see that my engineer's estimate was unfortunately not as wrong as we were hoping it was. So sorry, I was right. The, the oil bid is counterpoint construction, I've worked with them before, I think they're a decent contractor, if we wanna move forward, I think they would do a decent job. So in that meeting Eric mentioned, one of the meetings Eric mentioned, we met with a property owner who's willing to contribute on the order of about thirty thousand to this project, if we could extend the water line in lieu of having him drill a well. So the cost to the town would be on the order of sixty thousand. So question one is, do we wanna proceed with this or not? And question two would then be, who do we wanna word it to, but maybe we should do a question one first, because that'll make the rest of the conversation pretty short.
So let me ask you on this one, so we have applicant is going to be, uh, has already paid for the hookup, and then we have him, as in the other gentleman, though, contributing thirty grand. So we have in our fund for one, what's seventy, anybody know as far as, uh?
We looked at this before.
I think, I think the last time I looked at it.
In the seventies and the?
Well, this would be the impact fee, the water impact fee, and when you and I talked about it, it was over a hundred thousand, if I remember, wasn't it? Because we have, the, the school paid the large impact.
We ended up, we ended up relocating at it, I wanna say. I wanna say it was either sixty-eight or seventy-eight thousand or something.
I don't remember that seventy-eight, whether it's, so, I, I don't want to use my big gun, just.
Uh, so I guess we should check, it sounds like we have impact fees sufficient to cover it, we may not have the surf, I thought we had the impact fees to cover it and then quite a bit more, maybe the majority of our impact fees.
So, so my question would be, I mean, you, you kinda have feelers of what might be coming down the pipe, so I've asked this before.
Yeah.
Is it sixes at this point for hookups on any other roads that don't have our water lines?
At this point, I don't have any applications or have answered any questions.
But potential.
I mean, so I don't have any inclination, nobody on, you know, six hundred east has called and said, hey, I'm looking at putting in a home, how could I get water? I don't have anyone, you know, there's nobody in the town that I have any inclinations or any feelers out that would indicate that they're coming. Are they gonna walk through the door tomorrow morning? Maybe, but right now, I mean, we know if we put this water line in, we'll have two new hookups, you know, two, two people hook up to it almost immediately and then we're putting in a couple extra meters for folks that will look into it eventually. Yeah, like we did on Rain Struck, we put in a bunch of, you know, meter centers that are not hooked up, but they, someday they'll, it'll work out. Right now, this is, the, it's two connections there, it's, I don't have any connections anywhere else that I'm aware of.
Why isn't it the one connection paying thirty thousand in addition to the hookup cost and the other connection, it's all, it's only paying the hookup cost?
Well, so it wouldn't, so the one that's offered in lieu of drilling a well, that he had thirty thousand dollars, he was gonna contribute to a well, he would take that same thirty thousand dollars to his water line. To, to helping get water, you know, pouring any water to his house, cause he would rather have, for a multitude of reasons, rather have, you know, a water system rather than a well. So I don't think it's thirty thousand dollars plus the hookup, I think the thirty thousand dollars includes his, he's saying, you know, I'll, I'll contribute thirty thousand dollars, but that's my impact fee and that, that's what I'm contributing, so we're gonna call that my hookup.
That's pretty good.
Um, and the other one bought the connection years ago, I believe.
So we have the impact fee that money's gonna be have to spend in, what, seven years, five years, something like that?
You can, five years, there's some provisions to stretch it to seven, but let's go with five.
It has to be earmarked.
And, and it, it's strictly monies for, impact fees for water lines, correct?
Yeah.
So it's not like we're taking from roads or something else, it's water lines?
Well, water.
It's the water system, so I mean, we could, we could upgrade a pump or we could build a new water tank, but with fifty thousand, sixty thousand dollars, we're not building a water tank?
Well, what would you give this for?
Do we separate those impact fees versus, um, water systems?
Yes. I shouldn't say that.
Maybe?
Have we ever collected any impact fees for Storm Haven? I don't think we've, yes, we do, because we've never collected one for Storm Haven.
Yes, they are separate, not even in the same.
I don't think we have, I haven't really, many, many.
So the only other thing I thought of, cause I've, I've tried to go through, what, what could we use as money, if we don't do this, then what? And the only other one I can come up with, and I think it's a stretch to say the least, but it's in the master plan, and so it's, it's a stretch, but it's within the law, is the water system, is the Storm Haven water system? We have the well that's got the grant, we're trying to get money for the tank, if we got a grant for fifty percent of the tank or a portion of the tank, we could potentially use some of our impact fee money to build the rest of that, you know, to, to make that a complete project. And the logic there being that eventually the systems are supposed to tie together, so the impact fee is more storage, which ultimately we need more storage to grow. I think it's a valid argument, whether we're, you know, whether the tank is in our future or not in our future, I think it's still a really big unknown. I wouldn't wanna pass up, you know, other opportunities for that pie in the sky that someday we're gonna get there.
So, so my concern, so we got two hookups, one gotta pay and so it's gonna, the town gotta cop up seventy grand for, for a house?
Yeah, well, let's, yeah, so, so the, the bid works out to be, you know, we'll, we'll have to cop up sixty thousand for the bid, then we'll have some oversight and some other things, so that's a good number.
So I guess, I'm not necessarily right now saying I'm forward against it, I just wanna well thought out that if this is the best place to spend this money, uh, for this water line and, and, and that's why I asked Ryan if, uh, this is as good as any other place and answers. Yeah. I mean, does anybody know how many years we have left to spend that?
It would be when the school was built, so we're, you're, you're three. So we have two more years.
Does it smell smoky, you guys, excuse me?
A little bit, sorry about that, I needed a head.
I guess it's getting late. Great time.
Almost.
So I guess the county, is there something we wanna discuss, uh, move along here, put on the agenda to continue?
It's gotta be me, I've been shuffling.
The building's on fire, I'm outta here.
The accent's over there.
Well, yeah.
We might need to skip to the adjourning here.
We'll get blamed, Daniel, put it down in the main place. So I, I, we still don't know, the unknown is the fire flow.
Right, yeah.
So the unknown is the fire flow.
You mean how we would connect him, or?
Right, well, and what impact, what fee are we charging, this is for, the thirty thousand gives him a hookup.
Yes.
That doesn't get him a fire flow.
Well, but it does get him a fire hydrant in front of his house.
Yes, but I mean, talking about his sprinklers and his ten thousand square foot house.
Right, it would get him sprinklers in his house if he can do it through a three quarter or a one inch meter.
Yeah, I guess that's true.
Talking about if he has a tank, man.
No, if he can get the flow through the meter, then he, he would pass, if he can get the flow.
So maybe he needs a tank and maybe he doesn't, if he can.
Right, but we, we, have we determined that three quarter, one inch does get the flow?
We, we, we haven't determined, the fire department determined a three quarter long meter.
Um, there's special, there, there's engineers that design the fire systems and they have a whole flow analysis they do and. I've seen systems that claim to work and I've seen other folks that say there's no way. I don't know, um, I, I can show you homes that are about that size that are fed by a three quarter inch meter and have a fire suppression system in it. You know, sometimes that's tanks and pumps, sometimes it's not.
And there's some in that? We have a, that's three quarter to have a fire system in that.
I mean, there's a difference.
So the fire, so when, when Ernie Lowers five signs off on it, I mean, they, they know that, right?
So it's really when they design the fire system, they need to know, so what I've seen is that if you let the fire system engineers go without telling them what their meter size is, they come back and tell you that you needed three and a half, you know, three inch or four inch meter for your house. And then, you know, then, then you have to go back and say, okay, try, you know, try again, that's not gonna happen, did you see the impact fee? And they go back and they redesign it and there's things they can do to make it more, more efficient, and then they come back and say, okay, we're okay with a one inch.